Good afternoon, I'm Carolyn Ramsey, as Dakota and Cody both said. I've been working in this district for the last 15 years. I'm the candidate of experience. I also have the support of community leaders throughout the 4th District, and many elected officials, and business groups, and many folks. And I think it's because I have deep experience in this district. I brought a map right over there to give you an idea of this ridiculously gerrymandered district, which is kind of all over the place. We'll do a contest to see who can come up with the best description of this shape of the district. But I think Stephen's Puzzle Piece is a good place to start. I have three top priorities as a council member. One is to protect the neighborhoods of the 4th District. They are mostly green, well-cared-for, community neighborhoods with a high sense of commitment to the city, ranging from Canterton Park to Silver Lake to Sherman Oaks. These are folks who know what they want and they go after it. They're great partners for the city because they innovate new ideas on how to solve problems in Los Angeles. A great example was the pot hole lottery that the Sherman Oaks Neighborhood Council did a couple of years ago. So they need to be protected against traffic, which is an issue citywide, fire in the hillsides, crime, and some neighborhoods want to be protected against McMansionization. Some are fine with it. It's a matter of working with the ones that want that level of protection. Two, everyone knows we have to fix our infrastructure. My plan is dig once. If we come into your street to replace the asphalt, let's dig down and replace the water infrastructure because chances are it's 80-years-old too and needs to be upgraded. We need to install green infrastructure elements as well, especially during a drought. And the idea is dig once, do it right, and get out of the neighborhood and don't come back for 30 years. Three, in this primary with 14 candidates, I was the only one with an economic development initiative. It's called a Hollywood Innovation Zone. I'm bringing tech startups to work with entertainment companies in a 20-block area of the industrial core of Hollywood. This is Willoughby to Delongpre, Cole West to La Brea. I've identified this network of startups, been looking for a home. The entertainment companies in this area are eager to work with them to innovate. Companies that will provide clean, creative, well-paid jobs to anchor our economy going forward. This will also be my laboratory for macheteing through the red tape of getting a business set up in the city of Los Angeles. I'm sure you all know about that issue. If you think these things are ambitious, consider this. 25-years ago, Los Angeles was the crime capital of the United States. I was working here as a reporter. There were over 1,000 murders a year in LA. Last year, we were the safest big city in America. I'm going to work with all of you to make Los Angeles make the safest big city in America, the most vibrant, livable, and bustling big city in America too. Thank you.
No concept of time during when you're campaigning. My name is David Drew. I'm running for Los Angeles City Council, and it's good to be here again. You know, I grew up in a neighborhood, went to all the local public schools, been a beneficiary of all the social services programs, attended UCLA. You know, I'm part of the Asian Business, I'm a board member at the Asian Business Association. I've been endorsed by BizFed, I've been endorsed by Councilmember Bernard Parks, I've been endorsed by numerous fiscal leaders like Treasurer John Chung, Congressmember Howard Berman, and whatnot. And, you know, it's about, you know, this district as we've presented is a very gerrymandered district. So when you first look at it, people in Sherman Oaks look at it and say, you know, we have nothing in common with people in Los Feliz. Los Feliz is the same thing. We have nothing in common with folks in Miracle Mile. And I personally knocked on over 5,000 doors and nearing 6,000. And actually, this district is more cohesive than you know. It's made up of strong communities, strong vocal and organized communities, and they have so much more in common. And there are three reoccurring issues, there are three reoccurring concerns that keep on coming up whether you live in Sherman Oaks, Los Feliz, or Miracle Mile. And it's issues, concerns of development, concerns of infrastructure, and I mean the whole gambit of infrastructure. Potholes, tree trimming, sewer lines, water mains, and issues of access, or a lack of access to City Hall and City Council. And those are the top three priorities I want to focus on. But, because that's what the community and the district is asking for, but there is something that I really want to do, that I really want to push and work on on day one. It's jobs development. And I mean the whole encompassing word of jobs development. It's about reviving our economy. I don't even want to talk about, before I even talk about, talking about our natural benefits that we have here, our geographic proximity to the world. And I don't know if you know this, but 40% of all imports to the United States come through LA. 70% of all imports from Asia come through LA. We have one of the most well-educated workforces, differences in cultures where we are not taking advantage of. But before we do even all that, it's about fostering the local economies. I don't, I think the very word of innovation should not be wrapped up in a little box. It shouldn't be about an innovative zone over eight or 20 blocks, but it should be for the entire city of LA. We need to foster, we need to make City Hall more business-friendly. In this economy, yes, it's starting to improve, but if you talk to many people, it's still not improved. And it's hard enough for businesses to expand, but when they do expand, I can't think of a business who thinks of City Hall as a partner. It's not City Hall, oh, great, they're going to help work with us. It's, oh my gosh, we've got to go get a permit from them. You've got to hire a consultant to hire a consultant that, to hire someone to stand in line. I know we have some consultants here and it's good for business, but at the same time, I think even the consultants will agree. It's hard enough for them to navigate the process and the system. We need to make sure that the independent departments work together, and within departments, they don't work in silos, but they work in coordination. That's why we talked about, I proposed ideas about system navigators that could cut across departmental and within the department lines. Easiest way to explain it, a type of concierge service. So when you do expand your business, you see the city of LA as a partner, not a hindrance. This election is clear. Before, there were 14 of us and it was really hard to decipher where everybody stood and what everybody, who everybody is about. Now that it's two, the distinction is very clear. It's insider versus outsider, status quo versus change. If you think everything is going well at City Hall, if you think City Council is very responsive and doing everything correctly, then maybe I'm not your candidate. But if you think City Hall could have a new perspective, new ideas, if you think City Council could use a fresh perspective and start thinking outside of the box, then I'm your candidate. Thank you.
So one of the biggest issues facing the Valley right now is transit, and there's a push for more rail. And it's pretty clear that Metro will probably either do this Sepulveda Pass project, which is probably drilling underneath Sepulveda Pass, or possibly the Orange Line conversion, converting the Orange Line to rail. There's probably not money to do both, and I think most politicians are sort of quite the same, will pick one or the other. So I'm curious, A, what is a priority for you, the Sepulveda Pass or the Orange Line conversion? And then B, do you support the Orange Line conversion, or do you think that we should follow more of like South American models, like, you know, more big buses and that sort of way to go, the rail's too expensive? So if you could specifically talk about what your thoughts on Orange Line, too?
Okay, so I support the Orange Line conversion, I just want to be clear about that. That will, I think it's, one is short-term and one is long-term. The heavy rail under the hill to the west side, that's a very long-term project, and it could take decades to put together the financing for that. But, the money's going to be available to do the light rail on the Orange Line and Van Nuys Line. What I've always advocated for was the Orange Line coming down Van Nuys Boulevard, cutting across at Oxnard to Sepulveda, and then coming down Sepulveda. There are a couple places on Sepulveda where there's a possibility for a transit hub, and we would benefit from the economic revitalization of Sepulveda that the Metro line would bring. So when I worked in the council office, we advocated for that, worked with VICA, and I've met with Metro extensively about this. I mean, the heavy rail or light rail under the hill is a possibility, and I would fight for it, and, you know, depending on how the polling goes for Measure R2, polling is very strong right now, you know, we might be able to pull it off and start putting money away now for that. So we, this is a high priority, short-term, long-term. I also wanted to say really quickly, since I've beaten up on you three minutes ago, I did get the D O News endorsement, thank you very much, D O News, and the Times, and the LA Times, also Senator Bob Hertzberg, Councilmember Paul Corian, Councilmember Bob Blumenthal, so, and Sheila Kuehl. So I will work closely with Senator Hertzberg and my colleagues on the City Council, and Sheila Kuehl, to bring the, as much money as we can to the Valley, because I know the Valley has not gotten its fair share, and I'm committed to bringing great transit options to the Valley.
Okay, so follow-up though, it's so hard to make you a slightly different answer on the Orange Line. You said it's going to take long to build, and you're not, you're structured, you said you asked the object, you guys should decide.
Right, and I was really talking about the, the Van Nuys Line. I mean, the Metro will, is now looking at doing the Van Nuys Line at street level all the way out, which would take much less time and cost much less money than if they had to tunnel under the narrower parts of the street. So that was just my point.
At the Orange Line, were you confused with the two?
I did, I just, I said it would take seven years, but it actually will take three to the actual implementation. But I just met with Metro, and so I said seven years instead of three, that was it. I just said the wrong timeline.
Your thoughts, David, on both Orange Line and Sepulveda?
All right, Dakota, I think I'm going to like this debate. I fully support the Orange Line conversion to light rail. I fully support the north-south line of additional for the Orange Line from, I believe, Pacoima down to Sherman Oaks. I fully support eventually having, whether it's subway or rail, over or under from Sherman Oaks going down to Sepulveda Pass, fully support all this, and I believe we can do it. But, you know, wanting something and supporting something and actually getting it done is completely different. And this is where we require leadership. And I am, and we all know this, I don't have to tell you guys, the Valley is always left out. But we've got a lot of good Valley leaders. I have a close relationship with, and I've been talking with them, and I am very confident partnering with Felipe Fuentes, Bob Blumenthal, Paul Corian, to work with them to create a Valley Alliance of Councilmembers to push these projects through at Metro and elsewhere. It can be done. R2, you know, problem with the first measure R was, you know, Sherman Oaks always get short-shifted. We need to make sure that the only way, if R2 isn't even going to pass, is if these projects are included. But not just these avenues, all other avenues. It's not about the details, about, you know, Orange Line expansion and being costing $2 billion or 1.2 billion. It's about no matter what it costs, it's good for the, it's good for the economy, good for the local area, it's good for jobs, and we've got to make sure that Sherman Oaks and the Valley gets our fair share.
Another hot issue right now at City Hall is McMansions, and the City Council recently put a moratorium on the size of some homes. I'm curious, both your thoughts on that move, and then how the council did it, the way the ICO, it's basically a big day solution to the larger systematic problems at City Hall, so can you talk about that?
Yes, this is one of my platform issues that I'm standing on. Almost all candidates in the primary, and we're all against mansionizations, and we are very concerned about mansionization. It's primarily the baseline mansionization ordinance, the BMO, right? And what's happening is, it's disrupting the character and the fabric of our neighborhoods. Now, Councilman Paul Corretz has been spearheading this issue, and he's saying it's going to take 18 months to close all the loopholes and fix all the loopholes that exist in the current baseline mansionization ordinance. When I get in, I want to work with him, like many other things, to push it through even faster. However, the communities were so upset that they got together and worked with Councilmember Paul Corretz to have a moratorium, which is in the name of the interim control ordinance, to help relieve the congestion, I mean, to help relieve it while the baseline mansionization ordinance gets updated. Many communities were included, but certain communities like Sherman Oaks was not, partially because they weren't aware and they were not told. And that's the problem here. This is why the root issue of over-mansionization is the fact that there's a lack of communication from the community, the developers, and the council office. If we were able to go in advance and tell them and work together, we would be able to curtail a lot of these issues. I mean, most of the developments that exist today, there's a lawsuit on almost every single one of them. It doesn't help the community, it doesn't help the businesses, because for developers, time is money. And that is the role of the council member, to intervene early and make sure that both parties know where it stands, not because one group screamed louder or one group scratched someone's back. There should be a consistency, level playing field, so everybody from the business community and the developers and the neighborhood communities knows exactly where everybody stands, knows exactly what the rules are, so it can be properly followed.
So, I, I'm not anti-mansionization, but I'm going to work with communities to see if they want it. Some neighborhoods have large lot zones, and people are fine if their neighbors tear down a house and build something larger, they're fine if developers do. It's a matter of working with each community. And in Sherman Oaks alone, I'm close to folks who are in Vista Oaks, Magnolia Woods, Cody Road, Chandler Estates, these neighborhoods are very different from each other. There is not one, one-size-fits-all for Sherman Oaks by any stretch. So the city can't go in and impose restrictions and limitations on building on neighborhoods that don't want it. In my experience, I got into this because when my daughter was a baby, I wanted to plant trees on my street, and then our neighbor was caught up at gunpoint and they thought we didn't share. So, you know, I was a journalist, and I'd just gotten involved in tree plantings, and one thing led to another. When I was president in my neighborhood association, we had to declare the historic district. And we really worked with folks to say, will, do you want this? We worked closely with the council office. It was a, it was a very, very delicate process. People said, well, we don't want our neighbors telling us what color to paint our house. They wanted some things about it, and they didn't want others. You have to do that level of negotiation to put any kind of McMansionization ordinance or overlay on a particular neighborhood. Some neighborhoods in Sherman Oaks definitely want it, some neighborhoods in all parts of the district definitely want it, but it's a process that I would lead with the community and make sure I had their support, and then do it in a way that protects the character of their neighborhood in a way that they want to.
On the issue of development, the Il Belagio project in Sherman Oaks obviously is stalled, and I think that, well, the reason that people stoop is because it was built so close to the freeway. I'm curious what your thoughts are on building so close to the freeway? I know, for instance, Tom Labange said he didn't want to rebuild that big project downtown, the Da Vinci, because it was so close. Do you think that condominiums and apartments should be built so close to freeways?
You know, I'm a little confused. I think I heard Carolyn say that she is not an anti-mansionization person, which is confusing because at the Sherman Oaks Home Builders Association, I thought it was clear that we were both against mansionization. And this is the exact confusion that I'm talking about. Well, it's no surprise, because a lot of your contributors are like the Sherman Oaks home builders, which is one of the larger mansionization builders. And this is the confusion that both the community and the businesses have. Where does City Council stand? Where does my council member stand? What are the rules? I mean, if I miss one meeting, it might get reversed, and it happens. I mean, this is the confusion where we need to make sure that there is clear direction. So no one gets confused. Tell you straight out, yes, I am against mansionization. I am anti-mansionization. It does disrupt the fabric of our neighborhoods. The community has spoken loud and clear about it with the baseline mansionization revamp. The ICO was, the interim control ordinance was a request from the community because they were at siege. It's gotten so bad, and this is what I'm telling you, if we don't, if the council member doesn't have the leadership and the courage to step ahead of it, then what happens is communities who did not like the historic preservation overlay zone, as my opponent's talking about, are now wanting to become historic preservation overlay zones because they feel that's the only way to protect their communities. They're going to the far extreme, so nothing could get done. So these are the things we need to circumvent, make sure in advance that we address these issues. So, because now if you go to the community, if you say the words "smart growth," if you say the words "transit-oriented development," you're not going to get another word in. They don't want to hear anything else, they just close their ears and they're just against. It's those few improper developments that makes it, makes it bad for the others, or not few, but many of these improper developments that take advantage of the loopholes, that make it, make it bad for the rest of everybody else. We need to make sure we step in front of it, to work on these issues, to properly explain, educate, and get everybody on board. I'm not saying it's going to be easy. But it's about where the council member, where the council member doesn't shy away from the controversies, but jumps in head-on and brings the two parties together. If I support your development project, I took the no-developers pledge, just because that's how much the community is in mistrust. They're afraid that if you get $700, if you get a dollar from a developer, you're in their pockets. So I said, you know what, I'm not taking any of that. Does that mean I'm not going to talk to developers? Of course not, I have to talk to you. I want to talk to everybody, whether I agree or disagree, I want to talk to you all, get the facts. And if I support your project, I'm not going to tell you, go to the community on your own, I'll go with you. And I'll tell them, this is why I support this project, and I think we should do it. But at the same time, we need to get them involved, or otherwise you see another lawsuit. And I think that addresses the Il Belagio as well. Sorry about that.
You know, there's links, there's worries about air quality, having developments built so close to freeways.
And I'll make it, yes, I'll make it short, and I've worked on Southern California Association of Governments, and there's already health regulations where schools can't be built near freeways and whatnot, and that is a very health concern. It is a concern. I know we have a lack of housing shortage throughout the entire city of LA, not just, not any kind of affordable luxury, any kind. So it's about doing more, working with the health departments and working with the study to make sure that we mitigate those factors. So I can't necessarily say I'm opposed to it right now, but I would definitely look into it, because in order, we don't want to, in order to help one issue, we don't want to create a problem in another issue, which is healthcare concerns and asthma. And there's an actual link where asthma rates go up in those areas where it's near freeways.
Okay. Carolyn, thoughts on?
Okay, so the data I've seen does indicate that the air quality right next to freeways, of course, is much worse than on tree-lined streets far removed. And this is something the city really has to look at. The first thing I'm going to do when I get elected is hold community planning forums in Sherman Oaks, in the Wiltshire area, and in Los Feliz and Silver Lake, to bring folks together, to help them understand what the underlying zoning is in their communities, and get their input about what they want and what their visions are. There is, the, I have gone through this process before with the creating overlays for neighborhoods, not necessarily historic preservation overlays, but that's one of them. The city has many different ways to preserve the character of neighborhoods, but it's not one-size-fits-all. And if you try to impose a historic district on a neighborhood, they will fight back and they will rebel. It is, it requires a commitment of time and money, frankly, and not every big town can afford it. There are neighborhoods that now want historic preservation, but who I encouraged five years ago, this is really what you need, this is what's going to protect your neighborhood long-term, but they did not want it. They also, what I've seen works over and over and over again in development in the 4th District, is that when neighborhoods have protections in place that really protect the sanctity and the character and charm of the residential areas, they are much less resistant to the smart growth that we need on major transit corridors. So the, we have to look at things like the air quality around the freeways and other issues that allow building right now in areas where we have to decide whether we're going to continue allowing it.
Okay, let's move on to the minimum wage topic. First off, would you have supported the City Council's move to force some large hotels to pay their workers a higher wage? And then, if you could just quickly say what you think the minimum wage should be, obviously there's a couple of ideas bouncing around, 1325, 1525, 15, so those two questions. I know you talked about minimum wage in other debates, but the hotel issue, would you have supported that, and then where you think it should be city-wide?
That hotel minimum wage issue was a big, big, big concern of mine. And I think actually this was a question that VICA asked the last time I was here. Yes, I would have supported it, however, I have major, major concerns with it, especially the process. I know VICA and Stuart was, I actually heard the tape recording, I heard Stuart in the background yelling, because I know you guys were there, and you did not even have a chance to present your views. As I said before, whether I disagree or agree with you, it's not about that, it's about making sure all the facts are on the table. There were major problems with that, they had the same person who did the study, who presented the original study, do an independent study. I mean, there were actual people at City Hall that day who had separate studies, who were professionals, who wanted to speak on this topic, who couldn't even have a chance to speak. I could tell you, I want to make sure you guys have a seat at the table, and make sure your concerns are heard. It was, if I was on the City Council for that vote, I would have probably had some amendments to the motion or pushed it back, and, because I spoke to many hotel owners. And one big contention, not just for hotel owners, but it's also for waiters, waitress staffs, is tip employees. I think California is only one of four, or I heard two states in the nation, who does a blanket wage increase. And I've spoken to many hotel owners and restaurant owners who said that they can't give their valets or their waiters a promotion, even if they double their salary to become the captain, they won't do it because they make more, they make more money on tips. So it is a very, so yes, I would have, I won't deny it, I would have supported it, but I would have made sure we would have had other safeguards, had made sure at the very least, concerns were heard, everything was heard, everything was, the real facts were on the table before a pop, because you can't make a proper public policy decision unless you have all the facts. And as far as what, I don't know, your second question about minimum wage, what it should be? I support a living wage. What that number is, I think we could all sit down and argue about it.
Okay. Following up, why, for the hotel stuff, you did support it, why carve out for one industry?
Oh, yeah, you know.
And not another one?
And again, the process for the hotel minimum wage increase was flawed in so many levels. Thank you for bringing that up, you are absolutely correct. Why a carve-out? We should make sure all public policy decisions, whether it's reduce, responsibly phasing out the grocery receipts tax, or raising the minimum wage, should be based on public policy, not politics. I think there was so much politics involved with this, and we need to make sure we remove it as much as we can so we make real public policy decisions. I support phasing out the grocery receipt, for example, I support phasing out the grocery receipts tax because it's the right thing to do. We've got to first make sure it becomes a fair tax, and eventually phase it out. I don't believe, because, because we're doing the minimum wage increase, we should do this. No, it's not a tit-for-tat, it should stand on its own. Whether the minimum wage increases or not... Whether the minimum wage increases or not, we should phase out the grocery receipts tax. And not just that, there's other things we need to fix.
Carol, same question to you, and if you do, if you did support the hotel thing, explain why one industry should get it and then also.
Okay. I do support it. I support 1525 by 2017, the mayor's proposal for the minimum wage. But it has to be paired with relief for the business owners. That's why I support a rollback on grocery receipts tax. Both of these things have to be paired with an aggressive economic development initiative so that we can draw more businesses into the city. I know business owners who are on the outskirts of Los Angeles, in Clyndale and Burbank and West Hollywood, who say, "I would move back to the city and shorten my commute to five weeks if you would just get rid of that grocery receipts tax." So we have to go out and aggressively seek out those companies and bring them back to the city. That's the only way we make this whole thing work. I know that the city council wanted to raise the minimum wage to address the factor of 25% of the people in Los Angeles who are living in poverty. That is the goal of bringing more people into the economy and having them participate in the economy as well. I met with Rick Caruso this week, and he was talking about how he supports it because it will bring more, it will improve the economy and bring more money into the economy from folks who live here. So it's just a matter of working with the business community, and I hope the business community speaks up. I know, I know Stuart will. The story in the paper this morning said there just weren't that many small business folks at the county hearings. So we need to hear from you folks so that we can make this work for you as well.
And where do you stand on the council's decision to, on the hotel decision?
Yeah, I supported it.
Do you support it? Can you explain why?
The, this was before the mayor got elected, and the, it was one sector of the economy that was doing well enough to support an increase in minimum wage. They did work with the hotel owners to have a cap on the number of rooms of the hotels that were affected, and so we'll see, we'll see if it survives.
Okay, just to clarify, you said you support the mayor's plan, which is 1325 by 2017, so not the $15.
Oh, no, no, no. You said the $15 for the hotel.
Right, right. But I just want to make sure.
Yes.
All right, great. So we are going to ask some questions from all of you, so go ahead.
I have a question about oil production. California is one of the top three oil-producing states in the nation. About 1% of the oil produced in California is actually produced within the city of Los Angeles. I don't think there's much or any of it within Council District Four. However, there are hundreds, hundreds of families within CB4 that receive royalties from that oil production. There's currently a proposal for the city council by Corretts and Vaughn that depending on how it ends up, could ultimately eliminate oil production within the city of Los Angeles, which would have the effect of eliminating royalty payments for about 10,000 people throughout Los Angeles. What are your thoughts on that issue?
It's going to be a contentious issue, and I'm sure those who are getting royalties, we would have to be a major educational candidate to talk with them. And I think this is an issue, the underlying issue here is fracking. I'm opposed to fracking for numerous, for several reasons. One of them being environmental concerns. We are also in an earthquake country and whatnot, and it's also about what do we want to do with trade-offs? California and Los Angeles does have one of the most environmental protection stringent environmentalism of rules and regulations. And I know sometimes it's a burden for business, but this is why L.A. is so beautiful. This is why everybody wants to come here. This is why everybody wants to live here. I understand there's trade-offs, but I would support that motion. And of course, it would have to be, you know, a lot of dialoguing, for sure, making sure those 10,000 residents who are getting royalties has an opportunity to come and speak and voice their opinions, and let them speak as long as they want, not curtail them, and have a real dialogue, not just force it down their throats.
I would support the motion. I'm against fracking for environmental reasons, but mostly because we're in a drought and we have to protect our underground water sources. I'm not convinced that fracking is the safest way to protect our water table. That's my issue with it.
Anyone else with questions?
I know you all have questions. You are shy of me, so. DeGee, you need to call.
All right, here we go.
David, you commented on business-friendly. I'm not young. I have heard elected officials and politicians say business-friendly for probably 50 years. And quite frankly, I have not heard a single definition that appeals to the characteristics of being involved in business and being a businessman that makes city government business-friendly. Will you both please tell me what business-friendly is going to be if you're elected?
Go ahead, David.
Thank you. You know, let me give you two concrete examples. First one, I spoke to a restaurant owner who said exactly what you did. David, I am sick and tired of the president of the United States, other than the mayor, saying, "Business-friendly, business-friendly, small, small business, small to mid-sized businesses, the backbone of our economy, blah, blah, blah." I am sick of hearing that. And grocery receipts tax, phasing that out? Honestly, how long is it going to take for you to do that? Forget all of that. Let me ask you one simple question. I said, "What is that?" He goes, "Why do you do street cleaning in the middle of the day on Thursday from 12 to 2:00, during my busiest time?" He's a restaurant owner. You know what? That's right. Not that those three extra parking spots right in front of his restaurants is going to double his revenue, no, but it's a start. So the question becomes, why do we, the bigger question becomes, why do you do street cleaning in commercial corridors at the daytime? Why can't we do it at night when everybody's closed? Then it might become a union issue or an employee issue. Then we expect private sector to innovate. Why can't the city of L.A. innovate? Why can't we have our public works employee come in from, let's say, 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.? And second shift come in from 9:00 p.m. to 4:00 a.m.? Right? We just not only do we remove the street cleaning, but we also help with traffic flow. Not that we get one of those sweepers off the main thoroughfares that it's going to double traffic flow, no, but every little bit counts. Another thing, we talk about all this business growth, and we have all these incentives, tax credits, and this and that, and we're trying to attract businesses from everywhere else, which I'm very pro-advocate for, but let's help what's existing. Anyone in the fashion industry here? I said this before, the Magic Show, the Magic Show has nothing to do with magic, it has to do with fashion. It is the premier industry fashion event that happens once a year in Las Vegas. It's about like a 10-day thing, 10-day thing where everybody from all around the world comes to this show. Do you know what Magic Show stands for? Men's Apparel Guild in California. Do you know where it started? Not in California, not in Southern California, downtown L.A. But you know what the more shocking thing is? I've actually had people, and we have, everyone says we don't have a manufacturing industry in L.A. Yes, we do. We have lots of it, especially downtown on the garment industry. They came up to me and said, "David, did you know that it costs about $50,000, if not more, to go to the Magic Show?" Because they have to pack up all their stuff, rent the vans, trucks, all their employees, hotel, meals, booth rental. And they said, "That's one fact." Second fact, did you know pretty much half the exhibitors at the Magic Show are from not California, not Southern California, but downtown L.A.? So they said, "David, we have an idea. Can you help us try to get into the convention center, L.A. convention center? Because we'd like to do a little mini-Magic Show." They're not going to try to bring Magic Show back here because we don't have the capacity for it. But if 50% of the exhibitors at the Magic Show in Las Vegas is from downtown L.A., L.A. businesses in L.A., paying L.A. taxes, can you help us get in there? Makes common sense. Help with hotel stays, meals, you name it, all the ancillary factors. For three years, I've been trying to get them in. There's some changes in council members for that area that are both excited about it, but you know, things happen, politics get in the way. I've spoken to some of the other commissioners, new commissioners on the convention center, and they want to work with us, but here I am trying to actually work with them, and for three years, we can't even get them to open the doors. That's what I mean by doing simple things like that to be more business-friendly.
Okay, so ask your friends at the Magic Show to call me, because I could get that done in about two days. When you have the experience with the city, you know how to work with businesses. That's why I came up with this innovation zone, to identify the problems that businesses had in getting started and staying in business in Los Angeles, that we need folks who are focused on economic development. I'm so surprised to hear David talk about being so pro-development, because when he got the Democratic Party endorsement, he talked about how he was the most progressive candidate in the race. And he has staked his claim on sending all donations back to developers. They, having had the experience in City Hall, I know that the way to keep this city running is by building relationships with other elected officials at the state level, like they did with Senator Hertzberg, in other council offices, with the department heads, and knowing who to call, who to have on speed dial to solve problems that people have in getting a business started, getting a convention, going in at the convention center, and, you know, making the city function better for everyone. Also, the street sweeping does happen in the middle of the night on all the major thoroughfares now.
Thank you. Jessica, read.
Two questions, if not me. First one should be a pretty easy one. You both have said that you're in support of R and R conversion. That's fantastic. We appreciate that. Will each of you commit that if you're elected, it will sponsor a motion for the city council putting the city on record as supporting R and R conversion and calling on the mayor and his appointees to the Metro Board to make sure that the funds for that conversion are in the next Metro sales tax measure? So that's your question, one pretty easy, I hope. Number two, do each, do either of you have any kind of a general economic development plan? And if so, can you kind of describe what it is and how you would implement it once elected?
Yeah, I'll make sure to let council member Jan Perry, as well as council member Current Price, that in their three years of trying to work on this, that you can do it in two days, and I'll help him give you a call, so you could help them out with that. As far as the other comment about pro-development, I don't think I said I was pro-development. I think I said I understand the need for development, because especially in the city of L.A., where we have a huge housing shortage crisis, I understand the need for development. In particular, development should be neighborhood-appropriate development, so just wanted to clarify that. But as far as, yes, the first question is easy, yes.
Thank you.
I would hope you would support me in trying to ask the mayor to appoint me to Metro so I could make a motion over there as well. Second thing about.
Economic development.
Economic development. I fully support what the mayor's trying to do. You know, it's not about just getting your name in headlines with some visionary plans. Right now, it's about getting back to basics, and I fully support the mayor on that. And what I mean by getting back to basics is it's all small things. Yes, we need to support the big things about what we can do with just our geographic proximity and all the investments we could bring in, not just from other states or other regions, but internationally, all these things we could do. But before we do all that, we got to make sure, and helping local businesses as well, we got to make sure that it's streamlined, efficient. The mayor is already trying to shuffle departments around. You think departments work in silos? Within a department, they work in silos. It's about really conquering down the nitty-gritty and figuring out exactly, when a problem, when you come to me with a problem, I'm not just going to help you resolve your problem. I'm going to get to the root of the problem and talk to the line staff, not just the talking heads in the ivory tower, but if you talk to the actual line staff, it's not their fault. The easiest question is, we don't have enough money, we don't have enough staff. Well, that's the case, so let's see what we can do to think outside the box. You, as the line staff, working on this issue, if you talk to them and say, "What can we do to help make your job easier or more efficiently?", then they'll probably give you ideas. And that's what I'm saying, the council office has the power to do that, but for every person that's going to call the council office, there's probably hundreds who don't know the Cal the Council Office or doesn't have the ability to call it. So it's about having like a concerted system, maybe someone, like a system navigator, some staff who has the authority to cut across the bureaucracy. As a, this is a short-term measure, right? Until we can get it all working right, properly, so they could navigate, so they could have a decision. How many times have I heard people telling me, "Because the project went so long and the planner or the engineer keeps on changing." So every time you get a new engineer, a new planner, they have to review the plans all over again and have their interpretation to it, which you're pulling your hair out. Can we have someone who has the actual, an engineer just thinks as an engineer. They don't think of the other realities. I mean, I love to talk to you about concrete examples of where I helped fix it, and they're like, "Well..." And you try to explain to them, "Well, I don't know. This is all I know." We need someone who has the authority or the power to say, "No, okay, this is ridiculous." Right? And start streamlining this thing so it makes sense.
So when I was in the council office, we drafted the motion to get the Robbins bill repealed, and that is what cleared the way for light rail on the R and R. So, and we worked with Vica on that. Thank you, Stuart's mom, wherever he is, and Koby for helping us progress too.
I'm always there.
But, yes, I will be there. I will continue to be there for you on that. And in terms of economic development, as I said, I was the only person in the, in our very tough primary with, it was David and me and 12 other people, I was the only one who had a specific economic development initiative. The reason this will work is because the DWP laid dark fiber in this area about 15 years ago and used to have provided free to all the businesses in that area. So that's why I chose this for, as an economic development initiative, because tech startups, it's a very attractive thing to have high-speed internet access in the infrastructure. So you, you need someone who knows how to get things done at the city, and a chief of staff does all the things that David described. That's the ombudsman for the business community and for, and the residential community. When there are real problems, whoever it is, whether it's Richard Close or any of you, Stuart, or anybody in the valley, when the rubber hits the road, you call the chief of staff, and the chief of staff gets it done. That's the way it happens.
You know, Carolyn, for better or for worse, you are sort of loved by Tom LaBange, and that's been an asset, and maybe a liability too. And I'm curious, can you give an example of a policy decision that he made that you disagreed with?
I supported the out-of-basin solar program rather than the feed-in tariff because it provided for lower electrical rates to repairers in Los Angeles. And I felt like that was a huge priority because we were in an economic downturn and a lot of people were struggling. He favored the feed-in tariff because it provided jobs. So that was one thing where, you know, I lobbied him. Literally, I was calling him on the council floor. I was down there lobbying him, and then I had a rental meeting, and I called him for my car on the freeway and said, you know, this is, it's better for everyone. Lower rates are better for everyone. He voted for the feed-in tariff, and it's, you know, that's one example. But I, one story that illustrates a real difference between Tom LaBange and me is, I was at an event one night, and a guy came up to me and said, "A coyote died on the hill beside, behind my house, and we couldn't get sanitation out there to get it." And so Tom LaBange came to my house and pulled this dead coyote off the side of the hill. Amazing. So he said, of course, "Would you pull a dead coyote off the side of my hill at 9:00 on a Friday night?" So I said, "I would make sure it gets done." I'm all about improving the efficiency and the effectiveness of city staff so that those jobs get done, so the council member doesn't have to get out there and do it. And that's what I've worked to do in the city, just to, and whether it takes leaning on people and calling them at, you know, 5:00 in the morning, because I know that's what time they get up, I did that many, many times to get folks, to motivate folks to get out and get the job done.
Great, thanks. And David, a question for you. You're really pitching yourself as an outsider in this race. When you're on the 15-member council, you need the votes behind you, and you need to work as a team. Can you give an example of maybe of your time in the neighborhood council when you were able to bring people together?
On the neighborhood council? Other examples?
Just to help people understand how you're going to work with other politicians. Maybe you can give an example of how you were able to persuade people, how you were able to bring people together.
Yeah, you know, that's what I do. From my beginning, when I worked as a district resolution mediator, where I went down to South L.A. with one of my counterparts. South L.A. with one of my counterparts, working on conflict resolution between business owners and the neighborhoods. I mean, I'm all about bringing people together. Your specific example about city council members, you know, I actually had a good handful, not just councilmember in our parks, but I had about six, almost seven councilmembers who were very leaning towards me. I won't say who, but it's not like I don't know who they are. It's not like I've never worked with them before. I've worked with a lot of the councilmembers, and they were very in favor of possibly coming on my side. But of course, true to form, city council always votes 99% of the time in unison. Discussion is just for show. There is no real debate, and that's what I'm trying to change. And just like this election, low and behold, no surprise, the entire establishment is lining up for my opponent, whether they agree or disagree. It's just getting along. So I can tell you, when I get on council, it's not like I have no relationship with these people. They will be a breath of fresh air. They will feel like, "Yes, David, you did it. You have no idea..." I have so many $99 donors because, you know, anything under $100 doesn't get reported. I have so many people who want to give $99 because they're just afraid of their name coming out, you know? Because... But win! And there's so many people who want us to win, wants me to win, because it will change, it will bring a fresh new perspective, and it will show them that, yes, you can say no. Yes, you can bring up other ideas. And as far as coalition building, I mean, at the hospital I worked for more recently, it was a mental health hospital, but now we have, in the past three years, a federally-qualified healthcare center, which is primary care. And one of the things you need to do to have a federally-qualified healthcare center, you need to get the support of your nearby federally-qualified healthcare centers, which of course, you're taking from the same pot of money, so everyone bites you on that. But it's about bringing them together and explaining to them, "Guys, we're all in it for the true mission of serving the people and providing the primary care." It's about... And it takes years of relationship building and bringing people together. It's about helping them in their grant-making process. It's about when I was at Supervisor Burke's office and when we did the Co-Occurring Disorders Institute, where I got the health, not only the health department and the mental health department, but also the sheriff's department, the prisons, the foster care system, public social services, to sit down together and open up their books and share money to get a program created, which is now county-wide because Councilmember, I mean Supervisor Zeb Yostovski paved the way afterwards and took the charge, with the urgent care systems. At the neighborhood council where I am, you know, there was a huge overtake of consultants/ developers who wanted to overtake the neighborhood council. We reached out, and today, the neighborhood council I served on was primarily one ethnic group, but now we've got multi-ethnic groups and multiple different stakeholders from the community to come on board.
Questions, please.
Hi, my name's Jennifer Pecor, and I work with the Adult Skills Center, and we serve individuals with intellectual disabilities. And I'm wondering what your role in helping support that would be? How would that look?
Wow, you know, I mean, I've been working. This is... These are the things that the city council and the city hall can't do because they don't have the resources, the manpower, and that's why I would do everything I can to support you. Not just in writing letters of support for the various grants you're going to apply for, but being there at your fundraisers, being there at your events, seeing how we could synergize, because you are doing the services of creating jobs, especially for special needs communities. We talk about homeless issues, and it's going on an uptick. Everyone's saying, "Oh, you've got to do something, you ought to do something about it." You can't... There's no silver bullet to fix it. The best thing to address homelessness, and you've got to understand, after the '70s, homelessness is pretty much synonymous with mental illness. Our homeless population is severely mentally ill. To address that, you know what the number-one thing to help homelessness or number-one thing to help mental illness? It's not medication. It helps. Counseling, it helps. Permanent supportive housing, it helps. All of this helps, but the number-one thing is a job, a sense of worth. Now, it's hard enough for students out of college to get a job. Just imagine how hard it is for someone with an arrest record or someone who is special needs to get a job. It's about partnering with you, figuring out how we can incentivize the tax credits for special needs populations when employers hire, reducing the stigma, everything we can, whether it's educational or partnerships, to help support what you're doing.
So my approach has always been to make the public spaces that are available to everyone the best they can possibly be. And that is one way where I would support any population with any disability. We have to fix our streets and sidewalks. I've made vast improvements in the parks in the Fourth District. I was the point personal on expanding Griffith Park by 138 acres in Van Nuys Sherman Oaks Park. I had a development project where the fees were moved to build new soccer fields. We're building three soccer fields in Van Nuys Sherman Oaks Park. When we finish, it's going to be the premier soccer complex in the city of Los Angeles. I got an anonymous donor to install fitness equipment in Van Nuys Sherman Oaks Park. So my mission has always been to improve the city as a whole in the public areas, handicap access ramps everywhere we possibly could. Also, we have a Department of Disability, and I have done a lot of work with that department, so many, so much, that members of their team are helping me with my campaign. So I would reach out to them for help on how to help you. Thank you.
So both of you have talked about jobs, obviously, the importance of jobs. How would you take advantage or strengthen initiatives that are already in place with the largest community college district in the nation, LACC/DC?
Carolyn?
Sure, yes. So I was just talking about this the other day. I wanted to... Francesca ran for the Community College District Board, and we've been friends for a long time and have talked about this over coffee many times, that we want to improve the relationship between the business community and labor and the Community College District and L.A. USD, so that we are preparing students for the economy that we're trying to build. And those connections have not been made yet. I'm very focused on the economy 30 years from now or even 20 years from now. I feel strongly that we have to create and foster the creation of more clean and creative jobs because that's what Los Angeles is known for. Our homegrown industry, the entertainment industry, provides great, clean, creative jobs. I've been supported by, endorsed by IOTC and the Teamsters of many of the entertainment industry labor unions, and I... Coffeeed this week with folks at the Carpenters Union, and we talked about this. How do we work with the Community College District effectively and with L.A. USD to prepare students for more highly specialized jobs that are more well-paid and will help them afford to live in Los Angeles, which is, as we all know, an expensive place to buy a home?
I fully, fully, fully support our community colleges, especially our community colleges, which is often a safety net. You know, I attended LACC, Santa Monica College as well during high school and during my college years to take extra classes because it was so affordable. And you know, we have to take advantage of that. You know, taking one step back, it is an embarrassment when it costs more to house somebody in jail for a year than it is to send them to college. This is not just a city council issue. This is a more global issue, but this is something we need to acknowledge and address. And we are overcrowding the jails, so what do we do? Build more jails. A lot about building more community colleges, right? So everything we can as a city of L.A. to support our community college districts, especially our community college district, is vital, whether it comes to expansion, whether expanding our internship programs, apprenticeship programs, mentorship program, having actual pathways, you know, not just talking about it. And job creation is hard enough in itself, but the other problem is we do have a very skilled staff, but sometimes not skilled in certain areas. I mean, it's about working, not in a vacuum about in our little ivory towers at City Hall about, "Oh, this sounds good," but actually talking with our partners at the unions, at the community colleges, at the business sectors, right? And if the city of L.A. can't do it all, help the linkages. Help link the business community with the community colleges, the UC systems, all of them. So we foster this together because you guys need employees. It's about the role of the council member is not to be an expert on everything. You can't be. But it's about going to the expert, creating those linkages, fostering those linkages, bringing people together. Sometimes it won't work, sometimes it will, but it's about making sure we make those commonalities and so we can all progress together.
Anyone else?
All right, so this is a fun one, but you've got to go with me on the premise.
And this is the last one, so it better be good.
Pressure. So one of you is elected to the council, okay? And you're approached by SCAG, and they say, "David, Carolyn, your district is short on housing. We need 100 units from you ASAP. But the good news is I have two projects for you. You can choose one of them, but you can't change it in any way." I've got a project that's 35 miles out from the city center. It's a greenfield development. It has habitat impacts, will increase VMT and air quality from all of the cars coming into town. I've got another project right next to transit, right next to jobs. Everyone loves it except for the immediate neighbors who say it's too big and there'll be too much traffic from there. Which one do you choose and why?
I'd want to take that one first.
I've worked with SCAG. That was one of my issue assignments when Supervisor Burke was in office. She was actually the president of SCAG, Southern California Association of Governments. And of course, during her presidency, the seven-year... Every seven years, we do the regional housing needs assessment. Fell on her lap, and that's one of the issues I've worked on. That is a very hypothetical premise because obviously SCAG wouldn't probably bring that project up, but I think your underlying premise is about having the courage to stand up, right? And, you know, I think, obviously, you juxtapose the question where the first option is just completely not possible, and it's the second option of, you know, transit-oriented growth, right? Transit-oriented development, smart growth. And again, what I told you before is, once you say something like that, the community shuts you off completely. I believe if we start early in advance, and hopefully, in your hypothetical premise, I've already been a councilman for several years, and we already worked with the community and had all these win-win solutions with the developer, where we will bring someone and say, "Guys, these are the guys that you love because these guys, you know, have worked with you and have been successful in traffic mitigation and all of this, and now this is the situation at hand. We need to address this problem. What can we do?" I'm sure we could have a little give and take and create a project that will both... It might even be bifurcating the project and having two separate projects. We don't know, right? But having a project where the community understands, because if you give the community some wins and they feel like a partner, and you tell them this situation, then they might be able to give a little, SCAG will be able to give a little, and we'll be able to work this out.
So was it the first out or...
Well, they're both hypotheticals. I think the first is probably completely out of the realm, right? The second one, I think you kind of framed the question where the second one is the more plausible one, but you know...
Well, the first one is what we've seen for the last 40 years, right? Suburbance law. So the question is, are we going to stick with that paradigm or are we going to move to a new paradigm?
No, I mean, we've got to look at the paradigm as a whole as well, right? Because the whole premise of smart growth and transit-oriented growth is living where you work, living where you shop, right? And the problem now is even... And that's why I love what Metro's trying to do with the 25 or 30% requirement of building affordable housing at transit centers, right? Which makes more sense because usually the underlying factor is if you're lower income, you're more apt to taking transit, right? Just because you're on a transit station doesn't make you want to sell your car. Just because you built some bicycle racks doesn't make you look at the bicycle rack and say, "Oh, I'm going to ride a bike now," right? So it's about making it more sense. So it's about if you start building out in the suburbs and you're working downtown, it just adds to the traffic congestion. So it's about making sure that we have not just innovative zones in Hollywood, but we have innovative zones in Sherman Oaks, we have innovative zones in the areas where people actually work. And, you know, and especially in CD4, there's a lot of consultants working from home and whatnot. It's the new industries fostering those things.
Okay, so I would support the in-town development. I wouldn't have the authority over the other one because we don't have any big fields in the Fourth District. It's fully developed. But the trick is to listen to the community. I'll tell you two stories. One, there's a project going in at the corner of Crescent Heights and Sunset, and that is at the base of Laurel Canyon. And people in Laurel Canyon were coming after those developers with hitch forks. They hated the project. All the scoping meetings were very contentious. I met with the developer and said, you know, "Look, in a..." This was just a conversational meeting. I said, "You know, in the Fourth District, her project performed well, property values increased. I want world-class development in this district." So I wasn't talking about his project specifically. I was just saying, as an overall rule, we're in a drought, we need more LEED-certified buildings, and we want projects that bring vitality to the streetscape to create a more walkable, transit-oriented city. About a month ago, he came back with Frank Gehry as the designer of that project, and the people in the hills love it. Now, I wasn't anticipating that he was going to go and do that, but it was sort of a paradigm shift where he thought, you know, "Let's try it. Really great design." Another woman who lives in the hills, a community leader who has endorsed me, asked me to coffee the other day, and she said, "Do you support buildings that don't have full parking? I heard that you support buildings that don't have enough parking." And I said, "That's not true. What I've said is I'll support the reduced parking if it's adjacent to transit. If transit is coming, then..." I've talked to people on the planning commission about, "Why don't we have repurposed space so it can be used for parking now, but when transit arrives, they have to change the purpose to office or whatever the use is of the building?" They've done this in other cities, and it works. So that's what... I just feel like we can't underpark buildings now for areas that don't have transit. People have to get to their own apartment buildings. She said, "Ah, great. That was my own question. I'm going to endorse you." So when you really sit down with people, they have very specific issues. Another thing, another woman I spoke to, another community leader who is endorsing me now, said, you know, "What about all this development? We get nothing out of it." And I said, "Maybe you don't, but your neighbors who work in construction do. They're getting a job, and they're able to stay in Los Angeles with their families." She said, "Well, I don't know that people in Los Angeles are getting the jobs." So I told folks, "Look, if we can guarantee that jobs will go to local people, we will get more support from neighbors."
Great. So we're going to have closing statements now, and to give your statements, if you could focus on maybe responding a little bit about the complaints from the Valley that they are overlooked. A sort of an exaggerated example of this is that Garcetti released his budget last week, and on the front of the budget book is a photo of downtown. And Mitch Englander at a budget hearing yesterday complained about that. He says, you know, "You showed downtown off the Valley." So there's a feeling, and some of it may be more of a snowball effect, or maybe some of it is more just complaints than reality, but then there's other people who feel that the Valley is too newly overlooked. But either way, there's that feeling. So when you, you know, try to woo these people, talk about what you would do to make sure that... What you would do differently to make sure that the Valley's heard and those complaints sort of start to go away?
Okay. My go first?
You can go first.
Okay, great. I'm already working with an architect in Sherman Oaks who has a vision for land to get medians in the business district in Sherman Oaks. I have done this work in other parts of the district and know where the money is to make these things happen. I think that will make a big difference in Ventura Boulevard, Woodman, Van Nuys Boulevard, right outside here. And these projects just give identity and character to the business districts. We can create an entryway to Sherman Oaks to really identify this as a wonderful community. The issue in Sherman Oaks is that the business district has not risen to the level of the residential areas. I mean, there are spectacular neighborhoods in Sherman Oaks. So I'm committed to working with residents, with Jeff Calvin, the member of the Neighborhood Council who had this vision. and with funders to make that happen. We're also talking about creating a plaza right next to the AT&T building on city-owned property. And making it a gathering place. There are just not enough public gathering places in Sherman Oaks now. This is something that I have incredible experience with. I was the Los Angeles program director for the Trust for Public Land, in addition to my other experience. That's what we did when I worked there. I I'm just, you know, this is a big job. This district is forty-one point seven square miles. The whole city of San Francisco is forty-seven square miles, just to give you a point of comparison. It spreads all the way from the four oh five to the five. This is a spectacular district. You need someone who has experience with the communities, with the business community, with the city hall, with the Chamber of Commerce. All of these folks have endorsed me. You can draw your own conclusions from that. But the role of a council member is to establish a vision that I'm getting here and like I'm, you know, working with Jeff Calvin on his vision for Sherman Oaks to to for the residents, for the the improvements that you want to make and the change that you want to see in the city. And then you have to know how to pull it off. The city is a complex city. I love Los Angeles. I've loved every minute that I've worked at City Hall. But it's, it takes a while to figure out how things work. We have to unravel a lot of that, simplify the systems and make it more accessible to the public. But I am in this because I love what I'm doing. I've established these relationships with folks at every level of life in Los Angeles. And I'm here to to elevate this district, bring new ideas, improve the economy and protect the neighborhoods. Thank you for having us.
You know, I heard about the innovative zone, innovative zone in Hollywood for such a long time. And I know even the LA Times cited it as one of the reasons why they endorsed my opponent. I can't tell you the numerous flaws that I could see with that, but all I could say is, for Sherman Oaks, it's one example of Sherman Oaks being left out again. Where's the innovative zone for Sherman Oaks? Where's the innovative zone for Miracle Mile? And in the word innovation, by its very definition, should not be restricted to twenty blocks. And, you know, and I've been marginalized. I know what it means to be marginalized. I've been part of neighborhood councils. I mean, my own friends tell me, David, doesn't matter who you vote for, nothing ever changes. But I'm here to tell you, yes, it does. And you know, Jeff Calvin's name was thrown out all the time, you know, for a lot today. And I met with Jeff Calvin, I talked, I saw his vision plan and I applaud his work because he's getting different groups for the first time so-ha, the Sherman of Homeowners Association with a neighborhood council in the chamber, to all sit down together and work. You know what, I'll promise you one thing. Anything that happened to Sherman Oaks, I'm not going to, just because it sounds like a good idea, doesn't always turn out to be a good idea. And the only way you figure that out is by speaking with all the stakeholders, all the folks. Like VICA, it's not just talking to one person and saying, wow, that sounds great, I'll do it. It's talking to, okay, let's see what else I'm not seeing. And come talk to other folks, bring everybody. It's a little bit longer drawn-out process, but that's the way our democracy works. And I hate to say this, but, oh, man, it's about trust. You know, if I was sitting there, you're hearing both of us speak, we're saying almost the same thing. But where do you stand? I want you to think about where we stand, you know? My opponent takes credit for great things like the soccer field that opened up in Sherman Oaks, but says, then says, I have nothing to do with the Ilvello Giacomo decision or the Varham decision. I mean, you can't have it both ways, you know? And you don't want someone, and it's, I'm so confused today because there are so many different issues that were thrown out where I heard completely the opposite at other places. And do you want someone who's just going to cave because an idea sounds good or someone is supporting you? Or do you want to support someone who's actually has the courage to stand up for the right decision? You know, because if you, you might think, well, you know what, I could influence this person. After you do that, it's a race to the bottom. Because if you could influence that person, so can you. Who gets to win? You both lose. You know, I'm about not being reactive, but proactive, you know? And knowing who to call is the easy part. Identifying the problem is the easy part. It's what are you going to do about it? You know who to call, does things get done? You need someone who's a doer with fresh perspectives and new ideas who can get it done. Thank you.
So I want to thank all for coming and I want to thank our candidates for being here. I know you have university debates, including one tonight.
Another one tonight.
And I want to thank St. Paul. So thank you, guys.